Want to introduce myself real quickly. I'm Anne McCarrigan. I am the president of the League of Women Voters of Alameda. And just wanted to take a moment to thank you all for joining in to learn more about the candidates that you'll be voting for come November. Also, absolutely want to take the opportunity to thank the candidates who were able to attend this evening. And thank you for running for office. It's the work you do is very valuable and appreciated. And of course, I'm going to take a little time to let you know a little bit about the League of Women Voters. So of course, Tuesday happened to be National Voter Registration Day, and that is so much the core of what we do. We were very pleased to be out at the schools this week, pre-registering students as you can now register to vote at the age of 16. Had our volunteers out and about, and so that was great. And also performed, had an event at the library over the weekend. So if you are ever curious about anything related to voting, I certainly hope you would head to our website, l w v alameda.org, where you can find all sorts of information relating to voting, as well as other areas of advocacy that the League takes part in. We take our work very seriously. As you may know, we are a nonpartisan group, and so we look through the lens without having that political piece to it, which is very valuable, and I think especially to voters. I also recommend that when you're getting ready to vote, if you're not sure who's on the ballot, if you're looking for information, you can go to votersedge.org, and that will provide the information for where you vote, who is on your ballot, and information about the candidates and the measures. Finally, this is a school board forum. I would like to also talk about a program that was developed here in Alameda by our League and is used in leagues throughout the country. It is called Verify It. I'm going to read this so I don't get it wrong. "It is an interactive game to help students and first-time voters identify misinformation and better understand their government and their voting rights." So that's, it's really very fun. It is very interactive. It provides you the opportunity to answer questions, and then also gives you the correct information in how to recognize especially false news or learn more about civics and how our government works. It can be used as an individual, and it's also used in the classroom. You can find that by going to verifyit buzzer or just go to our website, l w v alameda.org, where you are able to look under youth outreach, and you can find it there. Also, you can become a member, which we would always love to have more members. And if you are a student watching, which I hope there are some students out there, you can become a member of the League for free. And that gives you access to not only your local League, but also the state and the national League. So with that, I will be turning the evening over to Anna Crane, our treasurer, who will be moderating tonight's forum. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne, and thank you all for joining us. What we're going to do, we're going to start by having each candidate introduce themselves and give an opening statement. And we're going to start with Ryan Lalonde. So when you're ready, go ahead, please.
Sure. Hi, my name is Ryan Lalonde. My husband and I moved here in 2015. Our son started school at Edison Elementary. From day one, I was kind of sucked into school, helping make sure that Edison had the resources that need. Sat on the school site council for two years. Moved on to work on the Edison PTA, was president. I think my proudest achievement was streamlining our communications between the school and the parents and enabling our families of color to be able to have conversations, to have conversation. As a parent of a black student at Edison, there was only 19 students, so it was important for our families to have that kind of connection. I then went on to do the treasurer work for the Islandwide PTA Council. And then currently, I'm the president of that group. I also chair the district's LGBTQ roundtable. And I'm proud of some achievements that we've had this last year in there, in the introduction of our gender and sexuality curriculum. That's happening at our elementary school levels. We also are doing some work on revising the transgender rights policies for the school district, and then also making sure that our gender-neutral bathrooms were open during times in which schools were kind of closing bathrooms during some of that TikTok phase challenge that was going on. I am running for school board to continue the progress that we've made and to tackle some of the weaknesses. As a family who's navigated the special ed system here at AUSD, it's been a struggle and a fight. And I think that there's ways that we can make it a little bit more welcoming for our families and make sure the students get the services that they deserve and the dignity that they deserve. I also am very thankful for the work that we did on Measure B to make sure that our schools had $300 million worth of resources to renovate, modernize, and be a part of the 21st century. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I'd like to ask Gary Lynn to introduce himself.
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for arranging this forum. I wanted to take this opportunity to share a little about myself and why I ran for the school board eight years ago. I grew up in Alameda and attended the public schools as an English language learner. My parents didn't participate in my public education experience due to their language barrier. I dreamed about someday being a father and to be engaged in my child's educational experience. Twenty-two years ago, I traveled to Vietnam as a single dad to adopt a five-month-old boy from a local orphanage. I became room parent, lunch supervisor, and school site council for his elementary, middle, and high school. Later on, I became the guardian parent for my friend's son when she passed away from cancer. Becoming the parent guardian of a mixed-race child, he is African-American and Filipino. He made me aware of his struggles and the challenges he faced at school. As a result of my active involvement in my children's schools, I saw firsthand the struggles of our English language learners and their families, the challenges for our at-risk students and the students with learning disabilities. It was these concerns and the lack of any current parent representation on the board at that time that motivated me to run eight years ago to be advocate for all students and families who need a voice. My priorities are to ensure we address mental and emotional wellness at our schools, especially post-COVID and the effects of learning loss. Support and intervention for all our at-risk students to ensure that they graduate and building our relationship with the Peralta Community College to utilize their resources to serve our students by providing summer school to our middle and high school students and building on a strong career technical pathway with our high schools. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I'd like to ask Maria Elena Moreno van Marren to introduce herself.
You got it right. Thank you so much. Thank you for having me tonight, and thank you all the people who are participating tonight. My name is Maria Elena Moreno van Mari. I'm from Colombia. I had two children in the district. And I was working like for like four or five years in Washington, D.C. with parents, organizing with communities. And it was so beautiful there in Washington, D.C. In 2020, my family moved here because my husband died. And when it came here to Alameda, well, also, my husband is from here, from the Bay Area. My mother-in-law grew up here, also in Alameda. And we are from this beautiful town. And we was living three years before here in Alameda, but we had to move from my husband down to D.C., Washington, D.C., and then we come back. And when we came here in 2020, all the schools was closed. And what surprised for me, because in Washington, D.C., they was ready to open at that point, because everybody was together working, was the mayor working, was the school district working, and also parents' voices working together. I was surprised here in the district, no parents around working with the school district to reopen the schools. And I started working with the community, with the parents. I organized a group to asking to reopen the school because our kids was at home, closing, and watching TV almost all day. My priorities for the school board this year is especially bring parents' voices to the table. Second priority is super important for me, budget transparency. And third is so important, tutoring programs for the children, but also a social and mental health program. It's so important. Prevention, social and emotional programs. It's so important for us as the parents. I've been working a lot with parents, and I see what's happening right now in the community.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go into the questions now. And I will read the question and then have you answer them in turn. If you ever need me to repeat a question, I will. Just ask me to. The first question will go to Gary to begin with. And the question is, "What can be done to help students overcome academic and social issues caused by the pandemic? COVID increased the educational disparities among our students. How will you address meeting students' needs at all levels of the learning spectrum?" Go ahead when you're ready. Gary.
Thank you.
Yeah.
One of the things that our district has done is to focus on supporting intervention for our students after coming out of this pandemic and returning back to school instructions. We've increased our counselor allocation, and also we've also increased our budget with our one-time funding for mental and emotional wellness. Obviously, this is a greater concern for all of us, given the fact that learning loss is well documented in light of the fact that we're coming out of COVID. And so one of the things that our district has done is to put forth a plan for, for example, we have after-school programs that were funded for after-school. Summer school was one of the things that was also worked on by our district. In light of the fact that students were coming back recently from this past year, I think that we must continue to be vigilant. I think, as stated, the effects of learning loss on the effects of mental and emotional psyches of our students is very critical, because if they are not feeling safe and supported, then they're not going to succeed. So I think our district has done well currently, and we're going to look at those effects in the data of the programs that we've put in place. And if they are, then we will look for ways to continue that funding. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I'd like to ask Maria to answer the same question when you're ready.
Can you repeat that a little bit again, please, Anna?
Okay, yes, I can.
Thank you.
"What can be done to help students overcome academic and social issues caused by the pandemic? COVID increased educational disparities among our students. How will you address meeting student needs at all levels of the learning spectrum?"
Thank you. Oh, my gosh. I've been working with these, the principals who may be hearing this. I know they know. This is a passion for me, what you say right now. COVID teaches us a lot, especially COVID teaches parents has to be involved in their children's education and pay attention, what's happening in the school district, to make sure we get what our dreams are, because we are the first teachers for our childrens, right? Parents, and all parents have dreams for their children. One thing that we need to put in together is the district pool for the childrens. COVID teaches us, we need to take in our immune system in order to be healthy. Why support our immune system? Healthy eating and also exercise. And so if we review the, I've been talking with the district, with the person who is in charge in the food district, because we need to reinvent in our eating, our nutrition pool to be able in order to support our children. The second thing that's so important to support children is they're so behind right now. They're behind, and I know see nothing on the budget from the last year that was completed in the school board. They know. We need more money for tutoring programs. We need tutoring childrens. If the childrens are behind in math and reading, we need to spend money on that, because that is going to help the childrens to get what they need, right? And also mental health programs. We have beautiful program in the school, in the school district, but it's not enough, because it's when you hire Boo Boo, it's going to be, when you hire Boo Boo, they could be depending. We want prevention. While we can do mindful programs at school to help childrens to process and monitor their emotions every day at school. And I've been working with this a lot my whole life, basically. So I'm so excited to bring those programs in the school district.
Thank you. And now I'd like Ryan to answer the same question, if you would, when you're ready.
Sure. I think COVID really pulled back the curtain on a lot of the disparities that we face here in Alameda with our students and our staff and our community. It really exposed the inequities that we have within our school system and how students respond and can potentially thrive differently if we put resources towards programming and services that support them, specifically with a child that's in special education. I really hope that we can have a lot of focus on increasing the missed service hours that we have for our special ed students. I would really like to increase the amount of mental health services that we're providing. Gary was talking about the fact that this year is the first year that we've had Alameda Family Services at every school site in the district, providing that counseling. For some sites, it's only one time a week. And having worked with Cale and the group Alameda Family Services, they know that there's more work to be done and more service hours that could be put in. Students, I will say, students really made me proud during this process because they're resilient and strong and found ways to kind of cope with a very difficult situation where we've never faced as a society in our lifetimes, and as well as parents and our teachers. And so I think that one of the areas that we need to do moving forward is make sure that the investment of those COVID dollars are going towards the social, emotional learning needs of our students, as well as helping those students that have fallen behind kind of catch up. I do think that we're going to kind of see the results as testing comes out and be able to apply resources in those areas. But I do think that we're in a positive direction forward, and we just have to make sure that we put the resources in the right spot for it.
Thank you. Now, the next question, Maria, you're going to be first on this one. Next question is, "Please share your thoughts regarding vocational education. Its place within the Alameda school system and how it should be funded?" When you're ready.
Can you repeat it a little bit more? It's low, and this, English is my second language.
I'm sorry. Maybe I'm not speaking clearly.
Don't worry.
"Please share your thoughts regarding vocational education. Its place within the Alameda school system and how it should be funded."
Vocational education, okay. For me, the most important, one thing, the important thing right now is should just be able to see their teacher's face. We need to see the person who is teaching me to be able to understand what you say, understand how to pronounce it correctly. And we learn a lot from COVID. Right now, we have to move in on from COVID, because COVID is not going anywhere. I keep saying that. COVID stay here forever. What we need to do is to implement healthy things in supporting us. So in vocabulary, one thing that we need to implement is definitely bring those new contents and those books that the childrens need, for example. Right now, we working together with my friend in Washington, D.C. She's doing a mindful program, and we doing something reading, writing. Mindful writing and reading for childrens to, because they need practices, so they can read something they really understand also, help calm down themselves also, but also supporting in their development. Definitely, we understand we are vaccinated. We don't need their masks. So we need to face that. We need to start working in a way that childrens be able to understand what the teacher says. So I feel like those, if we move in those directions and provide the right information that childrens need, they definitely doing well.
Thank you. Ryan, if you would answer the same question when you're ready.
Sure. When I was a student going to high school, college was not really a track that they expected for most of us in a rural high school. So we had a lot of vocational programs, from woodshop to CAD classes to a class where we could build houses. And I really thought I was going to be an architect. My dad is a welder for the car manufacturing GM. He was part of the union. My mom was a welder doing car frames. I thought I was going to go on a vocational track in a skilled trade, and I was ready for it. And then I had a counselor that said, "You're really great at arts. Let's explore that." I had parents that were supportive. I went off to art school. But I do recognize, being a first-generation college grad from my family, that college is not a track for every student. I do, really, this is one of my priority areas. We're probably one of the worst districts when it comes to providing those vocational classes to our students. And we're not doing it in an equity base or a quality base, really. We have different classes at different high schools and are not able to participate in them. I really think that we should have, just as a strong track of education, to drive our students to colleges, we do into the skilled trades. In fact, at the College Valameda, they are one of two colleges in the entire state of California that have a course on how to build and fix and repair and create electric car systems in the entire state of California, right here on our island. We could really be having great partnerships with College Valameda, with our trade unions and skilled trade organizations across the county, as well as partnerships with private organizations to really provide great vocational arts to our students that want to take that path for their career and for their family life ahead of them.
Thank you. Now I'd like to ask Gary to answer the same question when you're ready.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to follow off on what Brian eloquently shared about that program. And one of the things that I worked on as a school board member was I created the joint subcommittee with AUSD and Peralta Community College. And the programs that Ryan just mentioned is something that we need to tap into. Our career technical education courses or vocational studies were decimated in our past recession. And the state has finally understood and reprioritized funding for that. But as part of that, we do need to educate our students. We need to improve dual enrollment. That's one of the things why I've actually been working on for the coming school year with, on this committee that I serve with Jennifer Williams on, is that we like to bring in options such as career pathways for public safety, which is currently lacking right now. For example, if you wanted to go to something in fire safety, you have to go outside of Alameda County. And that's not, and we have a targeted group right here that we should be serving for that. Also, as Ryan was mentioning, on the benefits of that program, he just said, "Do you know that the starting salary for a high school student who gets certified in that area in electric hybrid technology is about $89,000?" I mean, can you imagine if we properly market that to our students, the opportunities that we could achieve? So for me, I concur. There's a lot more work that needs to be done. We need to work with our community cost system. I believe that we have very minimal dual enrollment programs that need to be expanded. In my study that I went to, down in the annual conference, there are school districts that have over 20 to 30 dual enrollment programs. Certainly, we are well short of that number, and I certainly would like to work on improving that through our committee and also, like I said, tapping the resources of our Peralta Community College system. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, for the third question, we're going to be starting with Ryan. And the question is, "The new Office of Equity seeks to ensure that all students with the academic, social, and emotional support they need to prepare for college, career, and community success in the future. Do you support the efforts made so far in Alameda? How should they be modified?" When you're ready.
Thank you for that question. Absolutely. I was part of the DEI committee before we created the office, and we talked a lot about our big wish was that we would have this equity office that could focus on this. And the fact that we had to get it through a CCAS process and have the state stepping in is a little bit of a bummer, but I am glad that it exists. And as a family, we have participated numerous times in this last school year. Shamar and her team have done a fabulous job of creating picnics. I was just at the picnic this last weekend, a meet and greet that brought a lot of the community members together. Like I said earlier, meeting other families with black children within the school district really creates a bonding effort for us. We have a lot of the similar difficulties navigating bias and racism, as well, at the same time, celebrating the great things that happen with our families. And being connected really creates community and empowers our students, as well as our families. The barbecue was wonderful that we had. And then I also wanted to mention that one of the other programs that I thought was really beneficial was that at the end of the school year, they had a special graduation ceremony for black and multi-ethnic students. And while we didn't participate, my son still got a certificate saying that he graduated well. He had a good GPA. And it's just one of those things that we never got that upliftment before. And it's just one of those notions that in order to make sure that all of us are on the boat together, some of us have to be elevated so that the boat can rise up for the rest of us. And so it's just, the programs are so important that we have to continue them, and I really hope that we can find continued resources for them and make sure that we're providing these resources to our students that are needing the most effort in helping with their issues that they face in the school district.
Thank you. Gary, if you would answer the same question when you're ready.
Thank you. I'd like to echo many of the comments that Ryan has just shared. Shamar Edwards has done a phenomenal job in the Office of Equity and Inclusion. As Ryan said, and I'm looking forward to attending the bowling event that will be coming up. You know, something I could finally dust off my old bowling shoes and see if I still have the ability to bowl. But beyond that, as Ryan has already stated, the effects that Shamar has had from a positive influence. What I find very important in her role is also the education she is providing in the importance of a diversified workforce. She will be overseeing that, and I believe that that's an education process that needs to go district-wide, to all our administrators and everything, on the importance that that has for our overall student population, to see people that are reflective of who they are. That was a very important aspect of my own experience at AUSD. And again, I just applaud Shamar taking on this very challenging job of letting people understand the importance of diversity and inclusion. And I would definitely echo that this is a position that needs to be continually funded because of the important role that it plays in our district for equity and excellence.
Thank you. And now, Maria, if you would answer the same question when you're ready.
Thank you. I would like to say, when we're talking about equity, we're talking about, it's like we're talking about budget. And when we're talking about budget, we're talking about needs. I feel like equity is meet the families where they are, and I know each person needs something different, right? Equity is a big topic in our district. The only things I don't want equity is separate us. I want ways how equity support each other in a ways equal. Anyway, not only we focus in one specific group, we focus in each person, each students in the district, because when all those students go to the classroom, they are the same. And we want to provide the same education for everybody. And if somebody need help, then we can do equity, like meet the family where they are. But we need to provide every single student with the same opportunities in order to grow, to support, in order to they can get what they need or where they want to be with their family. Also, families engagement. Equity is families engagement. It's supporting the family, not only the student. It's supporting connecting. I like what the equity word that they was doing in the, in the, how I can say that. They knew equity different in the district. But what I realize is more voices, better voices included in the equity work. Then I feel it's going to be more equity and more equal.
Thank you. Our next question, we will start with Gary. And the question is, "A new gender and sexuality curriculum was introduced..." a new gender and sexuality curriculum was introduced in our elementary schools last year. Do you support this program? When you're ready?
I I absolutely support the program. People, I think ju- children need to uh feel safe. They need to know who they are, and they need to understand that they're welcomed. I mean, uh, I I look at this as something that I I faced when I was coming to elementary school as somebody that was an E L learner. I I felt I didn't belong. I felt out of place. I am very proud of this district for its uh progressive thinking in 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 implementing a program says that to educate and make children who come to school feel that they belong. That is our mantra at A U S D. So I look back from my own educational experience, like I said, and I'm not gonna date myself, but let's say forty years ago. And to see the progress that we've made and the parents who participate today, I'm extremely very proud. And I am very glad that I'm part of a district that believes in the ability to give students a a sense of uh, who who they are, a sense of identity, and to feel that that they belong. And I think there's a lot more work that needs to be done, but the fact is that I I applaud our district for the work that they've done in this area.
Thank you. Uh, Ryan, if you would answer the same question?
Sure. Um, I want to thank first uh Olivia Higgins, who was uh the biggest part of making sure that curriculum was created. She brought me in to consult and review it um from uh lived experience from growing up with a lesbian mom. Uh, and then myself being gay and then having a child and how our families navigate. I have a lot of experience in working with organizations um uh for kids, for those of us kids who have gay parents and how we navigated school life, doctor's appointments, just things in general. This curriculum is uh reading-based, it's book-based, it brings and it's um uh age-appropriate for K through five. It brings in books that talk about um gender and sexuality in ways that the kids can really relate to and understand. Every child has a gender, every child has a sexuality, whether we want to acknowledge it or not. Um, and there is uh, these books do it in beautiful ways. The teachers have been trained, every teacher who's taken part in that course uh filled out a survey and how they felt about it. And we had great reviews from them. Um, we're supposed to be um, it's part of the L G B T Q roundtable. Uh, we're gonna be doing a week in October where we're hoping that all the teachers implement uh this curriculum within their classrooms during L G B T Q History Month. As you know, the state of California um now has legislation that says that our schools need to teach L G B T Q history. Um, and so these books kind of do a little bit of a a dual purpose in that regard. Um, just beautiful stories um that they read in class, the students respond, they ask questions, the teacher answer those questions. Uh, they have a great dialogue and um and students walk away feeling welcomed. I I know as a gay student, I would have loved to have read a book or two in my time um that I understood and and it had that difference. Um, where I'm like, oh, that's like me, or this family is like my family. And uh, I'm I'm hopeful that this curriculum not only brings a part of inspiration, but also uplifting it for some of our students.
Thank you. Maria, if you would answer the same question when you're ready?
Uh, thank you so much. Um, I go and make my very honest um a opinion in this, and I would like to, first of all, I would like to say it's nothing a about a people who be straight or people who are gay, everybody have values and respect. And for that, I go to make my big point over there. The school district is meant to be to teach math, reading, writing, and science and history. And that is what the school district can do. Sex orientation, parents can do, because each family have their own value. And let's say, for example, my values in my family is not the same values that, for example, and you and me values, right? Because it's your history, it's your culture, it's different. So schools have a limit what they can do, and parents have also limits what they can do. A school cannot teach children's religion. Why? Because maybe I am normal, maybe I I like meditation. Why is it true? Maybe I do different things. So we, it's nothing wrong to be a straight people or to be gay. It just, we need to really be clear, why our teachers go to a school, they go to learn in math, reading, writing, and also they go to reading science and go history, because history is a big topic too. So we need to focus in the school district to focus in that. And parents, you know, so they do their sex orientation with the children. The school can teach childrens when they need to have a period, when they need to, when they're going planning to have a no babies year. Those kind of things this school can do, but parents don't parenting with the school district or with the government. We are the parents who are teaching and engage our kids in those kind of areas.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Maria and uh COVID also added additional pressure on our teacher population. What resources would you recommend to help support them in and out of the classroom? When you're ready?
I'm so sorry, my daughter turned the water. I know I say what to hear you. Can you any repeat again? Sorry about that.
I'm sorry. COVID also added additional pressures on our teachers. What resources would you recommend to help support them in and outside of the classroom?
Yeah, I think for teachers who are so struggle in during COVID, um, is, I feel like all we are, we need mindful progress. We need a way where we can find ourselves inside, and we we can be able to relax, in a way we can be able to um, to connect in hand-to-hand with the person. So too, I feel like we focus too much in the color. We focus too much in in gender. We focus too much in what is it? No, just connecting people. When I look at you outside, I know see you, you you are white or black. I just connecting with your heart, because you are a human being and frame. I feel teachers need a space to be relaxed, a a a great space where they can be also um in in feeling how how they can, how I doing this work and how I can do better this job. And they need also space to connecting with the families. I feel COVID separate a lot us from the teachers, and we lost teachers. Um, last week, we had a wake back to school night in Wilmington School, and I was so enjoyable. I was in love with the teachers for the whole night. Like, are you kidding me? You guys are amazing. And and we don't see this, because we know was able to be together. We was just fighting each other by this uh computers or whatever. So I feel like we for real, we need just reconnecting and feel like human beings and teachers need to that space. Create this beautiful space. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan, if you would answer the same question when you're ready?
Sure. Um, I grew up, my grandmother was a school teacher, a public school teacher my entire life growing up. I spent every summer right before school would start helping put up her bulletin boards. Um, my goal, I thought, at one point when I was going off to school and studying art, was I'm gonna be an art teacher. And some of the best times that I've had are uh being in the classroom, teaching um adults. Un- unfortunately, I was doing adults and not kids. Um, but I want to say that during COVID, um, we really saw the um the importance that a teacher plays within our our child's life, within a student's life. How um their health and safety was demonized during that time versus um recognized. And that we um really didn't create a safe space for them when it came to rushing back. That a lot of them uh have uh lots of medical uh safety concerns, and we weren't really listening to them the way we should. But to really support teachers at this time, one, the district needs to make sure that we have substitute teachers so that they can take those mental health days when when necessary. We need to make sure that we're paying them um an appropriate wage. Um, right now, Measure A is under attack. That was giving our school teachers that um that bump that we were, um, we all voted for as a community. Um, and uh, we need to make sure that we secure that and keep that for our teachers and make sure that we have the living wage increases that happen each year going towards them. Money and supports within the school when it comes to resources. Parents um donating to their donor choose fund sites. Making sure that uh they have continuing education credits through the district. There are so many things that teachers want uh and need, but the most part that they want, in uh in my opinion, is respect. And respect for uh what they do in the classroom and what, respect what they do for students every day.
Thank you. Gary, would you answer the same question when you're ready?
Yes, um, I strongly believe that our district um was very proactive in taking into concern the safety of all our staff. I think I'd like to commend the leadership of Superintendent Scudary and Shar Khan for the complete revamping of some of our H VAC systems and our air filtration system, because that was paramount to making sure that before our teachers go back, they were in a safe environment. And I know that there were times where the public was concerned about the pace to which it it is. But we are a community of stakeholders, and we needed the consultation to, with our collective bargaining units, for them to fully feel comfortable. As Ryan said, what greatest resource we have is our teachers. And certainly for them, they needed to feel that they were returning to a safe environment. In addition to that, I believe that uh just as our students are dealing with learning loss, our teachers also need to be adequately prepared uh and to be able to help me uh mitigate the learning loss situation that has occurred. And I think that that uh there should be professional development in this area. Uh, so so that we recognize and are able to bring our students back up to where they originally were post-COVID. The idea that we value mental and emotional support in this district should also apply to our staff. That is very critical for them. And as Ryan said, uh, the the idea of 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 mental health days are very critical. Uh, I, as I think we all know our teachers and the stress that they undergone to come back and and it's and to teach under such incredible circumstances should be applauded. And we need to address and make sure that they're fully supported by this district in every way possible.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with Ryan. Please address difficulties in recruiting and retaining qualified teachers, given the cost of housing in Alameda. When you're ready?
Yeah, absolutely. We um, one of the benefits that we've been doing as a district for our teachers and uh can do more with is uh the partnerships that we've had with A H A. When we um offload surplus land as a school district, we've had that happen over the last two years. Um, there was a piece of legislation that made it mandatory for A H A to get the first dibs at the with the land. That doesn't exist anymore, but I do hope that we still prioritize uh making sure that when uh we give up a piece of land in Alameda, which is precious, because we don't, we only have so much island to go around. That we make sure that we um focus on uh housing for our teachers and our staff um and school employees, that uh it's better for the environment, because it reduces commute. It's better as a community when our teachers live, um, eat, breathe, uh, use their money here. Um, but I think that the the growing housing crisis is greater than just our school district. It's greater than just Alameda. It's something we have to tackle and and partnerships to um are gonna make that possible. Um, I think that making sure that we support initiatives like Measure A, as I mentioned before, um, that uh that go towards teacher salary increases. I think also um, one of the key things in recruiting and retaining is making sure that uh we provide that kind of continued education for teachers and staff uh to make them feel like they're a part of the community. Um, when it comes to uh initiatives and campaigns and to uh really just make sure that we are bringing in uh teachers and staff that look like and are part of um, the diverse school system that we have. And 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 I know that when they see themselves in their students, that they will um want to stay and continue to be a part of the A O C experience.
Thank you. Gary, if you would address the same question?
Yes, um, one of the things I wanted to bring up is that in my eight years of serving the board, I served with board members where this was of a strong value. Uh, I'm a proud that we've explored other opportunities, such as the officers quarter that we own on the base. We so looked into partnerships to bring affordable housing for our uh staff. Although some of these projects were not viable financially, I always applaud the proactiveness of this of 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 all the programs I've served with in looking for solutions to address the housing situation for our uh employees. I strongly believe that in order to retain um qualified staff, a major thing that was accomplished was the uh ca- campaign to fund um teacher salaries and staff salaries. That really brought us to uh close to county average. We're off by one point four percent, but much further than we are before. I applaud everybody who worked tirelessly on that campaign. And and as Ryan said earlier, I'm very disappointed that uh that particular measure is on assault right now. And putting us all into a kind of a not no status. And and that's very dangerous, because while other districts are not dealing with that assault, uh, they are continuing to be able to give raises as we're planning for contingencies. So I believe that that is something that we need to be focused on. Prior to me coming here today, uh, we talked about exactly this issue. Uh, and that issue was, as we bring in a more diversified workforce, what are the things that our district's gonna do to make that diversified workforce feel welcome? It isn't just to hire them, but what are the things? And so I like to mention just broadly that this board is very active in looking at solutions to make people feel welcome as not just for our students, but for our faculty too.
Thank you. Maria, if you would address the same question when you're ready?
Hmm, I I need you can read it again for me. I wanna make sure I understand you.
Okay. Please address difficulties in recruiting and retaining qualified teachers, given the cost of living, the cost of housing in Alameda.
Yeah, I know. There's a big um topic for us here in Alameda. Um, yeah, uh, I was attacking allow is be for different programs that we need to implement at schools. And right now, because one thing they don't like here is we know how before can I secure for all the keys in each the school. It's so that that driving me super crazy, because, but when I always ask you that, oh, we don't have enough staff. How are we going to do this? Right? So, yeah. This is a big topic that we need to address with the whole community, right? When you know how to answer, you know, with the people who had the problems, they had a solution. So we need to just open it up, like round tables and the whole community to know how we can implement better programs, more and hiring more teachers and and supporting us each other in the community, because this is a big problem that we have right now. Uh, we, for example, uh, with the summer conference, and for two, it's 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 a lot of difficult things with the summer camp, because a lot of people, they not be able to pay that money. They, the summer camps are private summer camps I hear, but the district only offer for some people in the community is not for everybody in the community too. So that somehow we need to work in in this. And I feel for this important topic, we need working with the whole community. Because when we need this kind of solution, we need to working with the community. I know how the answer for you, I'm I'm spartan.
Thank you. Okay, uh, for our next question, we will be starting with Gary. And the question is, would you be in favor of ranked choice voting for school board elections? When you're ready?
Well, um, I've kind of read a little bit about ranked choice voting. It certainly um helps to provide a more, I believe, democratic process for people to be able to uh list their choices in order. To uh, I think that's been something that I've seen implemented in other cities that have been very effective. At this particular time, I I I have nothing to oppose ranked choice voting. I I I just find it to be, from what I've read, it it's it's a very effective process to allow for a more democratic way of choosing our 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 candidates. It it's it's a very effective process to allow for a more democratic way of choosing our our candidates. And that's my comment on that.
Thank you. Maria, the same question, if you would.
So basically, you say if I'm a good candidate for this school board, that's basically the question.
Uh the question is rank choice voting as a way of electing the school board. Are you familiar with rank choice voting?
It was, no. It can you say it again?
Yeah, rank choice voting is a system where, you know, right now we have an election and. The top candidates win, whether they get a majority of the vote or not. Sometimes when there's a lot of people on the ballot, uh the person who happens to have the most votes doesn't have half of them. So more than half of the people didn't choose them. With rank choice voting, people can. Uh say, oh, I really like Anna, but if Anna doesn't get it, I really like Jim. And so forth. And so if the the one who's on the bottom is kind of thrown out and their votes are redistributed. Until you finally get a majority. So the idea is every vote really counts. If you didn't vote for the winner, you still voted for your second choice or your third choice. That's what rank choice voting is supposed to do. And uh the thought is that it's. More democratic in the sense that it makes sure your voice is heard. But that's my two second uh version of rank choice voting. And one of the things that the league has been trying to do is to spread that information. And obviously, we haven't succeeded in spreading it everywhere. Anyway, when you're ready.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you explained that. Uh I did agree with that. So important because. Uh how I say, we need to be equal. We need to be in all everywhere where we. Eh working, we we make sure everybody had the same opportunities to be able to uh to run for office or to do. Anything. Um yeah, I definitely um I I one hundred percent agree with that. I like it.
Okay, and uh. Let's see. I'm losing my place. I started with Gary and Maria Ryan. I'm sorry.
No problem. I figured this question was coming. Um I wa- I'll I'll be really straightforward. When it was first introduced, I, you know, I instantly thought of the Oscars and. And how um when they started doing that for best and uh best picture and. And how kind of some of the mediocre pictures rose to the the to the winning component. And I know it's very different when we're talking about uh elections and politics. So. I do want to thank the League of Women Voters for um their education and their workshops on ranked choice voting. And really moving me from apprehensive and a no to the the more curious and intrigued kind of side of it and wanting to learn more. I know why this was born um and uh has seen the progress of the legal importers talking about this topic. Because um our our votes uh for those who would win in these elections were. In the thirties and twenty percents when it comes to this uh city council. I do feel like maybe that it's a little bit of a solution, looking for a problem when it comes to our school board races since two thousand. Um the top two or three candidates have all ranged in forty percent to fifty-two percent of the vote. Um and uh that we've always had like a great majority of voices heard within the school board race. Uh that said, um if we were to implement it, I would want to implement districts. So that we could have a larger voting pool and make sure that we're not losing a demographic when it comes to how rank choice would work. Um and then I would also say I want to know more research and how it might uh affect those voters that are already disenfranchised. Um we've had a a a whole party um put misinformation about our voting process out there where people aren't really trusting what we're doing right now. And in order to have trust, we have to make sure that they know how the process works. So um. I'm all for learning more. Let's put it out there. Let's um let's educate the community about it. Um let's do more research and um if we implement it, let's do it as districts.
Thank you. Okay, for our next question, we'll start with Maria. And the next question is. What are your priorities? We're using the fiscal resources available to the Alameda School District. How does special education funding impact these? When you're ready.
Yeah, yeah, my priorities, I I mentioned my priorities in the beginning, but I go in nature again because it's. It's it's so important and bringing parents' voices to the table. It's me, the the. It's like we hide cable and we missing a a a a a fee. Something uh when we are working together, parents, the teachers, the schools, administrations, the district. We for real, all the parties over there together, we be able to and for real get what we need. And also budget transparency, like budget is new. And when you're talking about need, you need to go straight to the person, straight to the family who really have it, I mean. We, I cannot invent him. Oh, I go and do this or this in my office because it's not working like that. We need. Community engagement. We need wrong tables are on Alameda. We one service, that's not how that not help. That is not work. You need engage with the the real people who got the real problems in order to do a real a budget. And hear where their their ideas about it. And tutoring is so important for me right now. Um I know all how many chooses in the school district are so behind. And I'm so disappointed with a lot of things that the district is focused right now because we need focus. If my children is struggling math, why would I need to give it? Math, tutoring. Because the teacher is going to keep going. She cannot stop this for one kid. And that's if we see this black students right now, we know they are very behind, but they need to support is in. Reading, writing, and math. We don't need to be distraction with nothing else. So that is my like. Like my big eh eh priorities over there that need to, we working together as a community.
Thank you. Ryan, if you would answer the same question when you're ready.
Sure, um as I mentioned before, we're a family that's navigated the special ed system here at A O S D. We've gone from being a five oh four family to an I P family to now one where we're in this mode of. Transition from I P possibly back to five oh four. Um I will say that when it comes to our special ed services. Well, when it comes to education as a mandate, it's just underfunded. And when it comes to special education within um the United States, it's. Desperately underfunded. And um it's important that every dollar that comes from the state, there is increased. Funding this year from the surplus in the in the governor's budget that's gonna go towards special education. Um students and services. Uh what I really want to do is uh is think outside of the box and be a little creative. Uh about thirty to thirty-five percent of our budget goes to transportation for our students. Um maybe there's something else that we could be doing differently. There can be a dialogue we could put together. Um some ideas. Um we are part of a S L P. So when a special education student. Um is in our district, they're part of a larger district. So um there are schools that are afforded to them. If their needs are not being met within the confines of the island. Um we have sixteen schools here in Alameda and we have. Um thirty schools that are special ed students go to a across the East Bay um area because. Uh fourteen of those schools are providing services that our families and our students weren't finding here. Um we have to figure out a way to kind of. Bring back some of the retain our students and to bring these services um in-house. And to um fix our lack of our where we're behind in service hours. Uh figure where we can um instead of having vendors bring in um uh cra- uh certified staff to do some of the work. Uh and uh constantly, constantly always make sure that if there is extra, it is going towards the su- these students. Because um that time after time, the data shows that they're the ones that have the lowest graduation rates and. Uh are the ones that are falling behind the most.
Thank you. Gary, if you would answer the same question when you're ready.
Yes, um as Ri- Ryan echoed earlier, and I was actually gonna start with that, is that we are woefully underfunded. In the area of special education, both by the state and at the federal level. I mean, for there to be monumental change, it has to happen at the legislature for them to acknowledge the amount of. Uh unrestricted funds that must cover the special education education costs. I mean, Alameda. Is actually on the highest end of our county in terms of our special education. And that's. And that's what's needed to be done in terms of educating every children. I mean, everybody's entitled to an appropriate education. And so therefore, I I mean, if that's what's necessary. However, we need to be more efficient, as Ryan said, in looking at some of these. Uh joint uh utilization of the S L P, for example, and to see how we can maybe uh look at synergy. In terms of cost, uh we are ranked number one. Uh in the county of sending more of our special education students to non-public schools. And that's a tremendously co- costly uh effect. Uh just to give a quick data, because I'm a data person. Uh A U S D spends three thousand five hundred and one dollars for each special ed compared to the county average of two thousand seven hundred. And sixty-seven dollars. We also spend more from our unrestricted. We spend two thousand four hundred sixty students. Uh uh eight dollars uh from our unrestricted, whereas the county averages one thousand seven hundred forty-six. So you could see that our district does spend a a a large amount of funds in special education. And I think one of the things that are necessary is for us, as Ryan said, looking at areas of transportation. Looking at synergy costs with other uh school districts. But. Again, the real problem uh is really lack of funding at the federal and state level. For special education so that we could all appro- provide an appropriate education statewide.
Thank you. Okay, we've come to our last question and we will start with Ryan. And our last question is, what do you hope to accomplish during this next term? When you're ready.
Great question. Um well, four years is is a long time to think about the span of our school district. Um I'm looking forward to seeing um a lot of the renovations done through measure I completed. And um I am looking forward to the implementation of um our strategic plan that's just gone through the the final process. I'm looking forward to um working on the special education uh plan that is being uh that's renewing within this four-year period. Um I'm looking forward to my child graduating from Alameda High School within this four-year period. Um I also am looking forward to uh participating in um some of the subcommittees. Particularly around um policy and those that are working with uh child, youth, and families. Having worked with foster children over the last seven years, um I can see there are a lot of potential and opportunity for that. Um for that student within our school district, they're the ones that have the chronic ap- absenteeism, um the lowest graduation rates. Um and working with those families, um I feel like I could be a voice for them when it comes to being at the table. Um as a foster family, um a certified foster family, I really know how um how much work it takes. And I also know on the student's part, coming into a school district, coming into a new family. Um we we could do a lot more to kind of help them. And so I hope to be a part of that process. Um I look forward to being a part of the process around um expanding our ethnic studies program. Expanding our gender and sexuality program beyond fifth grade and go into the middle schools. Um I'm looking forward to having a a similar bell schedule across the high schools so that we might be able to have some. Synergy when it comes to classes where students can go to different schools or do a hybrids that they could take classes at the other high school. There's so many possibilities. There's so many ideas. Um and there's so many things that I don't even know that are gonna exist yet. But I do look forward to making sure that it's um progress forward and it's helping the students that are um furthest from. Their goals and creating better outcomes for all.
Thank you. Gary, if you would answer the same question.
Uh to my fellow colleagues who are running for the school board. I just wanted to share a little information from a from my good friend and mentor Neo Tam. And he said to me on the very first day, says Gary, never rule out two terms. Uh even though you believe you can accomplish everything in four years, it's under the best intentions. Uh things will come up that will sidetrack you. You have a vision. And as long as you work with people that are student-centered, you you'll be able to achieve your goal in due time. I cannot state how profound those words were. And I think that my colleagues on the bor- board will know that I've embraced certain values while serving on the board regarding the community college. And our ability to expand that program. And it's taken me more than four years. And so not by anything, but as you as you realize, you know, in these last eight years, I've experienced some. Monumental things that normally a a school board wouldn't go through. I have gone through, I think. Is it three, no, four appointment processes? Uh Anne and I had to deal with the school closure due to liquid faction. I mean, these consist things that I don't know if any board has remembered happening in a four-year window, but this has been. Uh uh really crazy for me. So uh like Ryan, I I do have goals. My goal is I'd like to see. The expansion of our dual enrollment program. I also echo Ryan's same value in ensuring ac- equitable access to elective. For all our high schools, no matter how that's achieved, opening the doors of the community, the college system. That's right next to the instant high school to provide them more opportunities. I look to continue to work on mental and emotional health for ours district. And those are again things, but I just want to let you know, uh I share that little tidbit of knowledge from my dear friend. Hey, thank you.
Thank you. Maria, if you would.
Gary, that was a beautiful words. Thank you for sharing that. Um. I looking for work with the community. Um um when I was fifteen years old in Colombia. Um I know high schools in my community, I had to walk you five hours. To get the more close school to be able to study. Can you imagine ten years old walking by herself? To get a school very far, very far away. Um when I was fifteen years old, I decided to become a leader in my community. And I I told the people, I don't know you guys, but I want to. Go back to school because my mom taking me from the school because my my brother died, whatever. So. I has to go with my mom working. And when I was working with my man, I see. He's across the street walking to school and I I was, I want to go to school, please. And the people in my community chose me. And I went to the mayor and I say, hey, mayor, I need school. I need this. I need this. And she told me, oh, wow, can you tell me your plan? Go working with your community and bring me the plan. And now I can telling you guys, we have schools across the street for every single child. We have new houses, new streets, hospital. We achieving a lot of calls because we working as a community. So I know I had a lot of wishes. I had a lot of a lot of things I want to bring to this community. I know we create our opportunities when we are working together. And I looking for working with the schools, I for the with the teachers, I knows the teachers. I looking for working with the district and for with the parents in the community to create those programs that were children's. And we all as a family, we dream for our kids. Um and one thing I want to be for us, they care progress for all children's in schools. But yeah, definitely, I had a dealies, but we need to work it out. Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Okay, uh I think Anne would like to say some things before you do the do the closer. So I'm gonna turn it over to Anne. Go ahead.
Thank you, Anna. And thank you, candidates. We thought we'd give the candidates a chance to take a little bit of a deep breath now that the questions are over before giving. Us their closing statements. And so I'm gonna take an opportunity to uh once again say if you'd like to find out more. About the League of Women Voters, you could always vote it, uh always visit our website, L W V A Alameda dot org. Excuse me, L W V Alameda dot org. Or uh we'd like to invite you to come and stop by and say hi to us. We are going to be tabling at the Alameda. Uh Pride in the Park on the eighth of October between one and five. And also want to give an opportunity to promote that event as well. It is our first pride event in the city of Alameda. If you're not, uh if you don't have any information on that, you can also uh visit AlamedaPride dot com to find out more. Uh it should be a fun event, but please come on down and uh we'd love to provide more information or visit the website for all things. Related to voting to become a member or gosh, we would love uh donations to help support the work that we do on behalf of our community. So with that, I want to turn it back over to Anna, who will give our candidates their opportunity to give their closing statements.
Okay, thank you. Maria, would you please go first? When you're ready.
Thank you. The only thing they're gonna say is, I know all um. The candidates who are we running for office, we have going pensions and I wish Gary and Ryan. And I wish Gary and Ryan the best and campaign work. And the people who go and get there is the people who are, the community needs to work, so, and to work with. So I just have to say, we are so brave, working with the community is has to be a passion, has to be a leadership, has to be knowledgeable, has to have experience. Maybe I know had the most better education, but I have a lot of experience working in this community. And listen, people, because this is most important. I know expectation, nothing else from leaders. I expect leaders listening to the community. If you listen, you'll be able to implement what exactly community need. Thank you so much, Annie and Ian. I appreciate you guys. And Ryan and Gary.
Thank you. Gary, could you go ahead?
Well, first, I, well, first I wanted to thank, you know, the League for putting on this forum and to both my colleagues, Ryan and Elena, for your wonderful service and the time that it takes to do this. I never saw myself in politics or being elected to public office. I saw firsthand the struggles of immigrant parents and the challenges of being involved in their child's education, both personally and as a room parent. I was horribly bullied in middle school, but was ashamed of all my parents. I finally felt a belonging when I entered high school and I met a teacher who looked like me and made me feel welcome. Given the recent anti-Asian violence happening in our nation and right here in our local Oakland-Chinatown community, we have an API student population of 37% in AUSD. I believe that it's important that our community reflect this diversity. And that's one of the reasons why I'm seeking reelection to the school board. My top priority is to ensure that our district has a vibrant mental and emotional wellness plan for all our school sites. Children who suffer from stress, anxiety, and depression must have the necessary support in place. For a student to feel successful, they need to feel they belong. Eight years ago, the election centered around the strained relationships with our collective bargaining units in the community. Since then, we have built upon a good relationship with our employee unions, been transparent with our community regarding our budget. I now hope to build on a collaborative relationship with our community college system that will benefit our students with additional free programs such as new dual enrollment courses in public safety and more. And for that, I thank you for this evening.
Thank you. And Ryan, if you would.
Sure, I'll echo what Gary said and thank you, League of Women Voters, for giving us right now our only forum that we have to speak as candidates about what we're going to do and what our priorities are. I, I have to say that I entered this race a little reluctantly because I thought I had all these other plans to do as part of the LGBTQ roundtable, as part of PTAC, things that I wanted to do. But I saw that there was an opportunity to make sure that there was a voice at the table that was pushing forward and embracing the great progress that we've made as a school district. I am a person that researches. I read, I change my opinion as I become more educated about something. I look for ways to make sure that we're not leaving behind a certain population when we're making a decision. I am a bold person. I usually don't hold back in my opinions on things. And I also am a creative person, as an artist, as someone who thinks with color and communication. I really want to be a conduit for making sure that we have greater transparency in our process and why we make the decisions that we make and communicating with the public, answering emails, returning phone calls. But you know, for me, there is some type, as Gary said, there is a representational moment for me in this and that for our greater community and that the school board has had a really difficult history with our LGBTQ community here in Alameda. And with this election, there is some type of symbolic gesture that happens in that if, if I am so fortunate to be chosen by the voters, that I would be the first openly gay person ever elected to any seat in our city's history. And I appreciate the time that you've given us to talk about that.
Thank you. I want to thank all of you for the effort you put in and for giving us substantive answers to the questions. I'm going to turn it over now to Anne to finish up.
Thank you, Anna. And also just very much thank you to Anna and Keisha, who, who's been doing so much to make sure that this forum goes smoothly along. We really appreciate your work and to the candidates for your time. I hope that this forum encourages others to do the same. I'm, I'm sure you will hear from others and have, give our community more opportunity. But the good news is we have recorded this. So for those who were unable to attend, you can let them know, guess what? LWVAlameda.org, the website that has it all. Now you can absolutely go to see the video of this forum as well as the mayoral and the city council as well. So thank you all for coming and we wish the best to all of you and have a great evening.
Thank you.